Morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Thursday, November 20th. This is the Governing Board regular meeting for the month of November. My name's Christine Novello. I'm a Governing Board Director and I'm the President of the Governing Board, therefore a chairperson for today's meeting. I call the meeting to order and invite you to rise, if you're able, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, and good morning. I'm joined today by all of the Governing Board Directors, therefore we certainly have quorum. If you'd like to know a little bit more about who the Governing Board Directors are by name and a little bit by background, you can go to our first Governing Board Workshop, which was held in September, September 6th, I believe, and just replay that part of the Moving on to 1.04, we always read our procedures for the meetings in the event you're new here or haven't heard them before. The Governing Board and its committees conduct all their meetings in compliance with Arizona Planned Community Association Open Meeting Laws per ARS 331804 and in concert with RCSCW bylaws, policies, and standing rules. Parliamentary procedures, as outlined in the most recent edition of Robert's Rules of Order, will also be followed in all meetings as appropriate, consistent with Bylaw 3.07, Procedures for Owner-Member Meetings, and Standing Rules Number Two and Number Three. So with that, we'll move on to Section Two and our minutes for the October 16th regular meeting. Any directors, any -- that's quite all right. Might be a good, just to take a sidebar, a good time for me to take my phone off of the table. And also, if you have a cellphone or a mobile device, you can put it on silent for us. Thank you so much. Back to approval of minutes. Directors for the October 16th minutes, any changes or objections? Okay, seeing none, by consensus, those minutes are approved. Thank you. Move on to 3.01 in New Business, and we'll start the discussion with a motion from Director
I move that the Governing Board endorse the engrossed language revisions to Bylaws Article III Owner-Member Election Meetings for inclusion on the March 30th, 2026 ballot for a community vote.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Director Schlemmer. So, and thank you, Director Forsey, for the motion. As a reminder, this motion pertains to the changes we discussed at our workshop. We have two potential areas of articles that are up for potential revision, and those are shown. They've been posted online. If we need to review them, we can pull those up, but you have them in print form, directors in front of you as well. Our legal counsel did make one, did make a couple of small changes. You can see those highlighted in blue. And basically, the first change is to section, the very first section, where it is spelling out that what an absentee ballot is considered to be by us. This is something we discussed back in our workshops, so, again, if there are any, and thank you, Terry, for bringing that up, so that we can see it on our screen. So, that's the substantial, and there are a few other areas of Section Three that she just suggested we strike out, the references to a written ballot, just call it a ballot or a vote. So, those are the full changes. Any questions on that, on the changes themselves? Director Graham?
Yes, thank you. Looking at the very last sentence, 3.11.5.3. Electronic voting will be deemed to constitute a written ballot or ballot vote for purposes of these bylaws. Is that necessary in the sense that in all other areas, we took out the word "written", and in all other cases, we refer to a ballot as an absentee ballot? So, is that last sentence even needed, or does it make sense with the rest of the policy?
Really good question. Again, Erin, in a phone call with me earlier this week, felt that that aligned us more closely to the statute, because the statute makes a reference to it. So, there's no harm in it. Is it necessary? Can't really speak to that, but that's why it's there. Anything else on that point, Director Graham? Okay, thank you so much. Before we, and if there are any questions, I don't see any online, but if there are any resident questions, you can queue up at the microphone here now. But for the directors and for residents as well, the actions that we'll be taking today, just so that we're clear, we don't update bylaws very often because it's difficult to do. By, and it should be difficult to do, right? So, these are things that we take very seriously. What we're doing is actually agreeing to include the, to put this out to our vote that will be held on December, excuse me, March 30th. The vote that will be held for Governing Board Directors will also include each of these points, so that every resident can review and cast a vote for the bylaws or against. So, we're not approving the changes, per se. All members will need to approve those, and we'll do that by virtue of the vote. So, today, Director Forsey's motion, therefore, is that we include it on the ballot for community vote. Director Graham?
Yeah, one other thing, it's actually, as listed here up in the title, the word "election" is misspelled, and it's actually that way in the bylaws, so we can just correct that typo.
You're right, thank you. How did we miss that? We'll correct that typo before we publish. So, with that one change to, to correct the typo at the title of Article III, are there any other concerns or questions? I see nothing, no one in the room, and nothing online. So, we'll put it to a vote. We'll start with Director Williams, please.
Yes.
Director Pajaskowski?
Yes.
Thanks. Director Graham?
Yes.
Director Forsey?
Yes.
Director Chatten?
Yes.
Director Becknell?
Yes.
Director Schlemmer?
Yes.
And Director Turner?
Yes.
Excellent, so that motion passes. Similarly, we'll move on to 3.02, and it's déjà vu. We'll have Director Forsey make this motion as well. Thank you.
I move that the Governing Board endorse the engrossed language revision to Bylaws Article IV Governing Board for inclusion on the March 30th, 2026 ballot for the community vote.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Director Williams, second, thank you. So, moving on to these updates, the only difference between what we discussed two weeks ago and now is that we have the, at the very end, 4.3.2.9, so it's the final sentence, or the final clause, now just adds all voting materials. So, anything results and any voting materials will be stored. That's the only update that was made to Article IV. It's in the same document at the bottom, if you're looking for that. So, with, with that addition that's highlighted in blue, any, any questions or concerns? Mr. Director Graham?
I have one concern. Reading the sentence at 4.3.2.2 states, "At the direction of the Governing Board, selected election services of Maricopa County may be utilized or electronic voting offered through a service provider." That would seem to directly conflict with the first sentence in Section 3.09 that says the Governing Board shall select an external independent service provider. So, we no longer have that option as listed in 4.3.2.2.
And that's not really true, because Maricopa County would be an external service provider for us.
We don't have the option to select them.
They may not be available to us any, any longer. Is that what you mean?
You're saying we could select them as an external provider?
If their services were available to us, it is an option that, that could be considered in the future. That's my understanding, but I don't, I'm going to look to, to you, Stephen. I don't believe they offer that service anymore, but if, if they do in the future, it would be an option available.
Yeah, they, they may still offer it, the, they would charge for it, significantly charge for it, so it probably would never be utilized. But I think it's good to have it in there as an option for the, for the Board to utilize that in the event that there was some issue with finding a service provider. To me, it would be basically an option of last resort, if they were willing to do it and available.
Right, but at least this, including it in the bylaws makes it an option for consideration, even though. So, that's why it doesn't, it, I don't believe it's in conflict, it just, it provides for the opportunity. Anything else? Any questions from our audience, residents? I don't see any online either, so, could you reread the motion? I meant to do that the last time. Director Forsey, could you reread your motion before we vote, please?
I move that the Governing Board endorse in-grossed language revisions to Bylaws Article IV Governing Board for inclusion on the March 30th, 2026 ballot for a community vote.
Thank you. This time, we'll start with Director Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Director Schlemmer?
Yes.
Director Becknell?
Yes.
Director Chatten?
Yes.
Director Forsey?
Yes.
Director Graham?
Yes.
Director Pajaskowski?
Yes.
And Director Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Although we're making great progress here today, it's by virtue of the fact that we had a really spirited workshop. If you missed it, if you're wondering, why is everything going so smoothly? Why are they not talking about this? If you missed it, you can go back to that video. 3.03, moving on to, to that, we, we have a motion this time from Director Turner.
I move that the Governing Board approve the engrossed language revisions to Membership Policy M02, Suspension of Membership as Redlined.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Director Becknell. So, Director Turner, normally, we, we have you explain, but in this case, this is something that was really put together by, by staff, so if we can have Stephen explain to us, in general, what we're endeavoring to do, and some of the, you made a few changes that are also highlighted here, and you can walk us through, to address the conversations and discussion we had at our workshop.
Yes, thank you, President Novella. So, as you recall, we had a discussion about this, and one of our members had made a comment about, in Section 1.2, that there wasn't a time period in which the Governing Board would respond, should the General Manager ask for a suspension beyond a 60-day suspension. So, that language in blue has been added, essentially saying that, that when the Governing Board, or, excuse me, when the, when the General Manager feels that a suspension longer than the 60 days that are provided as an option for the General Manager, that would need to be conducted pursuant to the Section 3.0. So, there's language that was added in there that simply said that if a request comes in by the General Manager for an additional suspension, or an appeal request by the affected person, that that hearing would be held within 15 calendar days following that receipt of that request. So, that essentially just added, added some time period in there, based on the recommendation from the last meeting. Other than that, nothing else has changed.
Great. And again, as I just mentioned, we had a really, a good and in-depth conversation and debate about what to change. So, as I recall, a number of directors had some questions. It was Directors Schlemmer and Turner that popped to mind, and I'm, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I just wanted to ensure that all the directors feel comfortable with the changes. As you were reading these, any?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Any other concerns from any of the directors upon review? Director Graham?
Thank you, President Novella. I'm just, in looking at what is going to be sentence or Section 1.3, which originally came from the original 1.2, I'm somewhat questioning, does it need to be noted in here? Because this suspension is only pertinent to someone's activity, has nothing to do with delinquency on assessments. That is an automatic function that takes place once you become delinquent. So, does this sentence confuse things, or do we even need it to be here? That, I mean, in general, I'm, I'm good with the whole policy, I'm just wondering, does this muddy the waters a bit?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Graham. So, the intent behind 1.3 really is, frankly, to clarify the waters, because in the event that somebody were to be suspended temporarily, and they maybe chose to not pay their dues, even though they're required to do that, the whole idea is that they wouldn't assume that because their time is up, that they are automatically reinstated. It's just clarifying that in order to be reinstated, you must also be in good standing. Now, you're right, to some degree, it's redundant, but the goal is, as I discussed at the last meeting, was clarity, so that somebody, if they say, "Well, you know, my, my suspension's up, so I should be, you know, I should be reinstated," it just makes it easier to point, right, to a section that says, "Well, yes, but you need to make sure that your dues are current as well." So, again, it's, I don't think it makes, it doesn't do any harm, kind of like the last one, it doesn't do any harm, it does add just a little bit more clarity to make sure that, something to point to for staff, to be able to say, "Well, yes, your time is up for your suspension, but you now are delinquent on your dues, and you need to pay those before you actually get reinstated."
What do you think, Director Graham? Does that answer your question? Okay. Any other questions, concerns from the directors? Comments? So, we'll welcome resident comments now, so we have someone stepping to the microphone.
Terry Bach, 135435. One thing that seems to be missing is that during that 60-day period initially, and then you have to go to the Governing Board if you want to extend it beyond the 60 days. My question is, it seems what's missing is that you could wait to the 59th or 60th day before you notify the Board. It seems that there should be something that, you know, 10 days before the end of the 60-day period, that the Governing Board needs to be informed. There doesn't seem to be a timeframe on when the Governing Board needs to be notified. Thank you.
I suppose. The reality is, from a practical standpoint, that wouldn't happen, first of all, but what I would also would say is that, also from a practical standpoint, if, within that 60-day period, if the General Manager was to, on the 59th day, decide that it would be appropriate to extend it, it would still have to have a 15-day waiting period regardless, so there would be a period of time where they would be unsuspended, and then potentially resuspended by the Governing Board. So, you could, I mean, the General Manager could, up to the last day of the 60 days, put in that request, and I don't know that that does any harm. It wouldn't, from a practical standpoint, it wouldn't, it wouldn't happen that way. Obviously, if there was a desire by the General Manager, and I'm speaking in the third person, because I'm not talking about me personally, I'm talking about the position, if there was that desire by the General Manager, or, or the feeling that there should be a longer suspension, that would be conveyed well before the 60 days were to have expired.
And, and even, in your explanation, even if that did occur, again, we're, we're speaking in hypotheticals, or, you know, so forth, in the future, this isn't how things happen today in practicality, but if it did occur, the, the rights of the member is still assured, because they're, by this policy, they have to be given at least those 15 days, as you were just saying, so there's no difference.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good question. Any other questions from our residents? I don't see any online. And, again, we'll have Director Turner reread the motion before we put it to a vote, please.
I move that the Governing Board approve the engrossed language revisions to Membership Policy M02, Suspension of Membership as Redlined.
Thank you. So, we'll, we'll start this time with Director Graham. We'll mix it up a little bit, rather than always putting the folks that are sitting on the end on the point. Director Graham?
Yes.
Director Pajaskowski?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Turner?
Yes.
Director Schlemmer?
Yes.
Becknell?
Yes.
Director Chatten?
Yes.
And Director Forsey?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. So, we're moving on now to the full policy review request, and Director Alan Schlemmer will make this motion for our discussion.
Thank you, President Novella. I move that the Governing Board will obtain a RFQ, or Request for Quote, for the full end-to-end review of all RCSCW policies for continued compliance with statute, and to resolve duplication and provide consistent structure and format.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Oh, thank you, Director Turner. So, Director Schlemmer, I know that this is something that you're doing on our behalf. Anything that you'd like to say before I provide a little bit more color commentary?
So, I do just want to add some clarity to this term, Request for Quote. There are a couple of terms that get used when you're going out to bid. Request for Quote is one, Request for Proposal is the other. There's a very subtle difference between the two. On a Request for Proposal, it implies that, once a good proposal comes back, that you will then take action to move forward. On a Request for Quote, we're essentially seeking information in order to facilitate a decision as to whether or not this is something the Board intends to then pursue, so it does not obligate us in any way to actually taking action once those quotes come back. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. And that was the, again, it's a subtle difference, but we felt it was an important difference, so that it's clear that we, we're interested in this, so that we can ensure that we have the resources, including financial and time, that would be required to conduct this kind of work, and that we can make a decision on that in the wintertime while we're looking at other budget items as well. So, thanks for that. And we, again, as I mentioned earlier, for anyone who's joining today and did not join our workshop meeting, we went into a lot of detail in terms of what we would like to do and why we want to do this kind of work, so if you're looking for that information, it is there. More than welcome to entertain any questions that come up today, but we won't repeat that necessarily. But now, I just open it up for any other questions, or thoughts, or comments from our directors. I'm looking at Director Graham. But, no, it, any, no, not at all. This is something that we have all, a number of us have been talking about for a while and looking at, and I know Director Graham and I have both spent a lot of time over the summer months, as well as now, looking through, trying to improve policies, so that's why I was looking directly at Director Graham. Are there any other comments or questions? Anything from our audience members, residents?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you, Director Turner.
Yeah, I just have one, is that I hope that the Board and the community are ready for sticker shock when the, when the quips come back. There's a lot of man hours involved in this, and, yeah, it could be expensive.
Indeed, and they'll, it'll be a great discussion for us in terms of, I think, again, it's long overdue, this kind of effort, how we do it, and whether or not we have the resources for it will be the great discussion that comes up, so, but let's, there's a movie that I love, and I hope that this is not, but it's a movie called Devil, Devil Wears Prada, and one of the characters says, "Gird your loins." So, in other words, prepare yourself for that kind of information. Could you, if there are no other questions, nor offhand comments like mine, will we read the motion again, please, Director Schlemmer?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
No, me.
This one was Director Turner.
That's Turner, just, thank you. Sorry about that. I move that the Governing Board will obtain a Request for Quote for a full end-to-end review of all RCSCW policies for continued compliance with statute, and to resolve duplication and provide consistent structure and format.
Thank you. Again, we'll, we'll start with, sort of the middle of our table this time, we'll start with Director Chatten. time. We'll start with Director Chatten. Why don't we start with you for our vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. And Director Becknell?
Yes.
Director Schlemmer?
Yes.
Director Turner?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Pajaskowski? Graham?
Yes.
And Forsi?
Yes.
Thank you. So that motion also passes. Thank you, directors. Moving on now to section 3.05. We have a working group update from Director John Chatten.
Yes, thank you, President Novello. Our working group, we're the only group that hasn't already presented their redlined policies to the, to the board workshop.
Oh, golf also. You're not the only one.
Golf, too. Oh, geez, Rudy. Anyway, we've met, we've met a couple of times. They've been very, very good meetings. It's myself, Holly McCurdy, and Suzanne Jones. But this last meeting we had, Sabrina was there, Stephen was there for a little bit, and we've had some really good meetings, and there are significant redlines being made to the property's policies. And thank goodness for Holly McCurdy, because she, she has been doing all the redlining and all that. It's just been a heck of a lot of work. But anyway, we are ready now to present those redlined policies to our properties committee meeting on December 4th, and hopefully, they will be approved and forwarded to the board workshop on December 12th. So, we're getting close.
Excellent update. So we're still, we're still on track, which sounds great. Thank you for all the hard work. Any questions for Director Chatten? Any questions from our audience, from our members? Sandra and I are still feeling very lonely. There's no one online commenting. There are plenty people, a few people online, but, okay. So, thank you for that update. We look forward to hearing more about this at our, officially, at our next workshop. Thanks, Director Chatten. Move on to item 3.06, golf policies, working group update from Vice President Director Rudy Graham.
Thank you, President Novello. At the October golf committee meeting, the entire committee reviewed all nine of our current golf policies. Seven of those had no changes made to them. So they will move forward as his, two of the policies, GO4, which is the use of powered golf vehicles, and G10, non-resident play, or public player cardholders. Those two had some discussion, so we formed a working group. That working group will first meet on December 10th, and the purpose here is, we have a charter to lay out exactly what they'll be doing. But the purpose of this is, we now have more and more four-person carts, which are heavier. We have carts that have different types of tires on them, and those tires can do damage to our grass. So we'll evaluate exactly what we're going to allow on our golf courses. And for the golf policy, G10, we currently have what is called a public player cardholder. That person is a non-resident, can pay a fee upfront, and then they get discounted golf for the whole year. And depending upon how much they play, they can actually pay less than residents. So they're going to look at whether this is really a fair thing to do, to have outsiders paying less greens, fewer green fees than our members. So that's the purposes of the working group, and they hopefully will complete this in December and get back to us in January. Thank you.
Which of our staff folks are, is acting as an advisor, or how many are working with your working group, if any? Usually, there's, if there is a staff person, if there is any.
Yeah, I have, I have three, three committee members, and Pat O'Hara is our staff advisor.
Perfect, thank you. Well, that sounds good, and I understand, you know, there's a little bit of a delay in getting started up, so if this does drift into January and needs more committee time, just let us know, let me know. Any questions for Director Graham? You're in good company, Properties Committee. Any questions from our residents? Then thank you for the update, Director Graham. We are moving on now to item number 4.01, and we'll turn this update to Director Anne Becknell, our treasurer.
Financial report filing. The October year-to-date 2025 financial report has been reviewed and accepted by the Budget and Finance Committee. It has been filed.
Thank you. For directors, as well as, especially for our residents, the Budget and Finance Committee is where a lot of the details are presented in terms of, what are our monthly results? We also had, at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting that occurred earlier this week, an update from our professional investment advisors, Cap Trust, very detailed update. So that's where the details are. If you are looking for that information and wondering why it's not here at these meetings, the Budget and Finance Committee goes into all of those details and asks a lot of questions. Of course, for our governing board directors, if we ever have questions about those filings or the content, this is the time to ask them. Just wanted to give a little bit of color commentary for anyone who's wondering where to find that information. And thank you again, Director Becknell. So we're going to move on. So everything's filed and available for review, and we'll move on now to Board Director Comments section. So we will start with Director Turner.
No comments today.
And Director Schlemmer?
A couple of quick things. First, in a few hours, our Torch Academy class will graduate, and I want to congratulate all of them on their achievement. I'm biased, I really think Torch is a phenomenal experience, and I would encourage anybody interested in learning about Sun City West to look into it. It's online. You can look at it on the Sun City West website, under Things to Do Torch. Second is, Thanksgiving is next week, and I want to just take an opportunity to thank all of us and all of our volunteers for all of their service to this community, and I want to thank our staff. We are really blessed to have a great team, especially our monitors. They make coming to the rec centers a delight. As you get to know them, it's kind of a great experience. It's like coming and seeing old friends. And then lastly, in my spirit of highlighting great things that our clubs do, I want to highlight the cycling club, the Sun City West Cyclists. They started several years back, and in full disclosure, I'm a member of the club, and I was actually involved in this several years back, called Bikes for Kids. They work with the Dicart Community Center, and also occasionally with the Surprise Police Department, obtaining bikes, both new and really good condition used. And they donate them over, and they are given to kids over the holiday season, and there's some great stories that come out of that. I heard the story, the year I was doing it, of a young man who was using that bike to ride after school to work, to get money to help his family. So it's a really great, a really great thing, and I thank the cycling club for doing that. And that is all of my comments. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Can I just add, there for Director Schlemmer, can you, do you know, off the top of your head, how many bikes were involved? Because it's, it's a substantial number.
So, I don't, I don't, Director Turner, but I will tell you this. The, I did, I led that effort for three years, three years back, and I know one year, we donated, I believe, 50, 60-plus bikes. And if you take that and multiply it over the 10 or 12 years they've done that, I mean, I bet, I bet they're approaching 1,000 bikes at this point, but that would be a pure guess.
It's really worth noting, thanks for the follow-up question there. And, and yeah, that's a, what a wonderful thing to highlight. So thanks again, Director Schlemmer, for bringing that to our attention. Director Becknell, any comments?
No comment.
Thank you. And Director Chatten?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Director Forsi?
Nothing to add.
Director Graham?
I'll just add, in spite of the weather, our golf courses are open today with cart jet only restrictions.
I know. Wear your, wear your boots. Yes, thank you. And Director Pajaskowski?
Yeah, just, we had a tennis meeting the first week of November, and we had the Pavilion Grill supply dinner for us, and it was delicious, and everyone was happy. So, clubs, if you're looking, and we had 120 people, and they did a fantastic job. So, clubs, if you need catering, I would highly recommend to get in touch with Lindsay over at the Pavilion Grill. And that's it. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, and the same to you. I believe that the, and one of the recent Charter Clubs committees, Lindsay, who is one of the owners of the Pavilion Grill, made a presentation to Charter Clubs. So, club members want to see a little bit more about the kinds of offerings they have, and how flexible they are. That's a way to go, that, to the Charter Clubs video. I can't remember the date of it, but you can, I believe it was the most recent one. Thanks again. Director Williams, any comments?
No comment, thank you.
Thank you. Two for me. First is a reminder, there are a couple of videos out, and I believe it's on our Sun City West, most recent general manager video, actually, talking with our Elections Committee Chairperson about our governing board elections. We are in that process now, so not all our meetings are this short and sweet, but we do invite all owner members in good standing, so that's someone whose name is on a deed, right? You can step up and volunteer. We're a self-managed association, so your volunteerism is a really big part of making Sun City West great. So the nomination papers and packets are still available. You just drop into Member Services, and they'll put you in touch with the people who can give you those packets. So the nominations process goes through December, and come January, we will have the full slate of candidates that are available and running. The second thing I wanted to just highlight for my fellow directors, the, there is another, there are several working groups working so hard in our committees, and I'm grateful for the work of all of our governing board standing and special committees. The Charter Clubs Committee is in the midst of making its review of our RNP's, which is very important. So I'll be sitting down just to get a quick preview from the, the folks who are leading that working group. Director Pajaskowski has agreed to join me. Are there any other directors who want, this is just an opportunity to give some early feedback. So if you do want to join the two of us, please let me know, so that we can get that feedback to the working group quickly. They're working as quickly as possible. And, and yes, I join everybody else's wishes to all of us for a wonderful Thanksgiving. I'll turn this to our general manager now for any comments or input.
Thank you, President Novello. Just to echo that, thanks, thanks to the governing board for all of their support, and happy Thanksgiving to all of you, as well as the community, and appreciate everybody's support. And we got some great things happening, so I'm excited for the coming year as well, which is almost here, by the way.
We have a lot of really cool stuff coming up, and, and this was, although we had a relatively brief meeting, again, for the, like, the third time, remember, a lot of the discussion occurred a couple of weeks ago at our workshops. So, thanks for that. Any comments or questions from our attendees, residents? Oh, excuse me, Director Chatten?
Yes. Stephen, can you tell us where we are in the process of hiring a master planning group to do our master plan?
Yeah, so, Director Chatten, so the, yesterday, as a matter of fact, we awarded the contract to a consultant by the name of Barry Dunn, is the name of the firm, and I plan on giving this update, or I'll give more update of a detail at the GM Ops meeting, but that has been awarded, and we will be starting with them very, very soon here.
Please.
I know that you're following the processes that we have, and many would consider this operational, but in the future, I wish that, I wish the board would be able to have presentations by those companies that are looking to get a contract with Sun City West. I think this, there's a lot of money there, and my previous experiences with councils and boards with cities and counties, staff did all the back work, group, or the background work. They would get a lot of the, a lot of the quotes and proposals from the different companies, and staff would narrow it down to maybe two or three, but then those two or three companies would make presentations to the council or board. And I think that was very helpful, especially when we're talking about spending $200,000 to $300,000 on a contract. So, that's my two cents worth. I don't know if it'll change anything in the future, but I would just like to see that happen at some point. Thank you.
Director Forsi?
I would have to say I would hesitate a little bit on that. It's like a hospital administrator administrates in the hospital, but they don't do brain surgery. And it's like, people are hired because of their specialty, and we each need to kind of remember where and what that is. You know, Stephen came from municipalities. He's going to know a lot in depth about master plans.
Well, I think-
Yes, in the municipalities, that presentations were made to the council.
Well, if I may, just to clarify, so, it depends. In fact, generally, no. In fact, depend on the community, but most cities and towns follow the same process that we follow, which is, the council gives the direction to the city manager to, once they approve something in the budget, to then execute on those items, and gives a blanket approval to execute those contracts. Some cities and towns, you're correct, do have where the each contract is brought back, but usually, it's frankly, a little bit of an inefficient way to do it, because you are duplicating efforts. You have the initial approval of the budget, and then to bring back a contract separate from that is, again, duplicating what was already been approved by the council originally. But, again, some cities do it, you're correct on that. But, again, the majority of cities do it the way that we do it here, which is a much more efficient way, which is delegating that authority to the manager to pursue those contracts and, and execute what the board, in this case, the board is asking for.
We did give, I understand the, the comments, and you're not alone. I don't, I don't believe you're alone in, in your request and looking for more. We're all so very, very focused, we have been waiting as a community and as a board for the master plan for quite a while. So I know there's a lot of interest and focus and desire. I respect that, Director Chatten tremendously, and anyone else who holds that opinion. Our, when we made a motion at the end of our last, it's at the end, it's at the final meeting that we have, our regular meeting, it's our end-of-year meeting in June, we make a motion at that point to grant this authority, and we did specifically grant the authority to go out and issue these contracts. Now, that would be, just, I'm pointing it out so that going forward, you said, "Don't know if this would ever be changed." That's the point at which we can discuss changing. If there's something specific, like this item, or that we, that we want to weigh in on, this is the time, or during the budget process, that would be the time to discuss it. I, I believe that we, as a board, delegated this authority to our general manager, to Stephen. I know how important it is to us, so I do respect your comments. I'm only stating that nothing untoward happened here. In this particular case, I think we're all really anxious for the update that, that Stephen mentioned. So, since we didn't have the opportunity to put it on the agenda here, we'll see it at the general manager's operations meeting in terms of seeing more. Director Pajaskowski?
Okay, so you just got done saying that it's very important to our, excuse me, to our community. So I am proposing that we move our GM Ops meeting to the lecture hall for that one meeting, and have it televised, so our community can also look at it again to see what Barry Dunn will be doing, and what the plans are there. That, the GM Ops meeting are not recorded, and I just think our community has been waiting for this, and if this, I mean, I don't know what kind of details you're going to be giving us, but I think it would be really important for us to have it televised or videoed, at least so our residents can look at it, and not just the board and the people that come to that meeting.
Listen, what I would ask is, a little bit more patience. Okay, I literally just yesterday awarded the contract, which means the meeting on the GM Ops, which is the day after Thanksgiving, I'm going to have limited details as to the exact kickoff dates and the whole process. I don't have that yet. So what I'm asking for is a little bit more patience. As we finalize, we have an internal kickoff to basically work with them to figure out what that looks like. There will be a kickoff with the board. We believe that we're going to be able to have them join us on the tours that you guys, but I'm still confirming that. But- But I don't have all the details yet. Believe me, when it kicks off, it will be a kickoff and the community will know and the board will know, everybody will know everything about everything. I understand and I agree with, listen, it's a, it's a great thing that we're doing here and, and I understand the anxiousness and the excitement for it and it is very exciting. I'm looking, I am really looking forward to it. We had a great presentation from this consultant and they are excited to work with us. I have talked to them already about the high level of engagement that we, to be expected and they are excited about that, that's what they do. One of the things that we chose, the reason why we chose one of them is because particularly one of their team members, very dynamic individual, I think is going to be fantastic to work with from an engagement standpoint. We just have to let the process work its way through and believe me, in the end, it's going to be a fantastic product, I'm very excited about it. So I would just ask for a little bit more patience as we work through the details on this.
To Director Pajaskowski's suggestion though, as, once, once you do have any additional detail enough for an update, we should put it at least in one of these meetings, something that can be recorded. And I know that you'll be very, we, we can see that you're very engaged with the community, you'll put out videos and so forth, but we would, when it's, whether it's in general timeframes, Stephen, in terms of, are, might we, if we think that we're able to get that kind of, any kind of an update to our community, December would be great and, but I believe with the holidays and so forth, you just let us know. It might have to wait until January, but the board, I know, as you can hear, very interested in hearing more about it, we're all very excited. And, but I do want, I, I do want to follow up and make sure that whatever, when the details are available, that it's something that our community can see.
Yeah, if there's something that I, substantial that I can provide on the 12th or the 18th, I'll be happy to do it at that point as well. But we'll, again, I, I just don't know yet what that looks like until I have that initial internal kickoff meeting with them.
And any sort of an update, I think, would be helpful during the month of December in terms of where we stand and when we would expect to see the update. Thank you. And Director Schlemmer?
The master plan and the progress we've started to finally make is extremely positive for this community. Those of us who have been on committees and boards for the last several years, this has been something we've talked about for a really long time, often to a brick wall. And now finally, we're making forward progress. What I don't want to have happen on this meeting is that suddenly there's a dark cloud put over this effort when there's no reason for that dark cloud. Our, our general manager was empowered, I was not on the board when that vote was taken, I would have supported it, but I was not. But he was empowered with making this selection and moving forward. And I, I don't want us today to, to create some false belief that in some way, he didn't do what he was supposed to do, that's not the case. And let's not take something that is a positive move forward and turn it into something that the community is going to start to ridicule and debate, that does none of us any good. We've waited a long time to get to where we are now, let's let the process run its course. If after we begin that process, there's an issue or an improperness or something that was wrong, then we'll deal with that in the way we would normally deal with those issues. But my plea to us is, let's calm down, let's take a deep breath and let's remove the dark cloud that we just threw out there, because I don't think we do ourselves any good by having it there. Thank you, President Novella.
And Director Chatten?
I'm tickled to death that we're doing a master plan. I'm just suggesting that in the future, we look at other ways that this could be done. For example, in a city, you have a road project and the engineer puts out requests for proposals and they come to the, they come to the council and say, well, these are the two proposals that we're looking at and we recommend this one and the council would vote. I'm just saying, I think it could be a little more of a, an open process. I wouldn't suggest for a moment that Stephen did something improper and I have, I have utmost faith in him and I'm sure that he selected absolutely the best consultant that we can get. I'm just looking at going forward, isn't there another way that we could perhaps look at some of these very large contracts that we're giving? And that's my, that was my purpose.
Thank you, Director Chatten. That was my, that was my understanding of your comment earlier as well. So again, my, my recommendation to all of us as directors is remember, when we're formulating that motion at the end of year, when we are, this goes for all of our budget discussions as well, we usually, we look at the entire budget, all of the capital items in whole and then remove any or force special scrutiny. Although we haven't done it previously, this is something that if the directors as a whole feel that there's an award or a project that we as a board require more or want more visibility on from a selection, that would be the time to have the discussion. But we did grant, as you said, Director Chatten, we granted you the authority, Stephen, to move forward to make this contract and to make the selection. So we're anxiously awaiting, as you can hear, all the details and we know our community is also equally as excited. So, so thanks for that, we look forward to more detail. Director Turner?
Yeah, just a request for the, the updates at the GM Ops meeting. If we can, will we have a project plan with timings at that meeting or if we can't, can we have a plan for a plan when we could expect project plan with all the timings?
I would imagine Stephen already said that they awarded the contract yesterday and it'll be just a few days of working time between now and GM Ops. I, I'm, I'm not involved in this, but I think that might be premature, but perhaps that plan for a plan is what we're looking for in December timeframe.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I verbally awarded the contract yesterday, so I haven't, we don't even technically have a contract yet. So, no, I will not have on December, whatever that is, I'm at GM Ops meeting.
First.
The first, will not have a, a detailed plan. I mean, really, I can do what I was going to do at the GM Ops meeting, which is what I'm doing right now. I awarded the contract and, and we're going to be having a kickoff meeting with the, with the consultant here, in, here in December internally. And then from there, we will have a formulation of the going forward and then there'll be a full kickoff, which will include the board, is my understanding at least, but I don't know that 100% yet, how exactly the kickoff will kickoff, because I haven't got that far with them. So really my update, I just did my GM Ops update, so.
Well, it's good. We got it in front of the community.
If you wanted it televised, that's the extent of it. I mean, I, again, I don't have much more, I was looking to maybe have a little bit more. The only thing I would say is that I would love to see all of you on the, the tours that we're going to be having on the 9th and 10th, I believe they are, of the other communities. And we will have the consultants joining us, we believe. At this point, I'm, I'm making for confirmation from them, but I do believe we're going to have them with us on that tour as well. So if you're not yet signed up to make it for those meetings or that, those tours, I would hope that you would be able to be there because that's a good opportunity to interact with them as well. That is my GM Ops update, early.
So now the, we've accomplished the goal of having an update for our community and thank you, Stephen. Any other comments or questions from the directors on, for, for GM, anyway? Yes?
Stephen brought it up, the tours, the 9th and the 10th. What does that do for us? Because I think seven of us are going, I mean, is that not quorum? I mean, do we not have to put this out that this is what we're doing? I mean, are we going to?
Of course. Yeah, that will be, we'll post something to make sure that everyone is aware that we have quorum on, on those tours. And for the community, in case you're wondering what we're talking about, a couple of members of the leadership staff and a couple of the directors, it's open to all of us, but again, from scheduling perspective, we're not all available. We'll be looking at a few of our non-Sun Cities fellow planned communities in the area. So we'll be looking at those to get ideas for strategic planning, perhaps for also, you know, how we can improve or input into master planning, but it's mostly for, you know, competitive analysis, for looking at opportunities to move our communities forward. So it was a great opportunity for us to look around, ask questions of a few of our nearby communities that we're not as familiar with. So that's what's, when we're talking about a tour, that's what's happening and yes, we'll make sure that we get those posted so folks are aware that we will have more than quorum in the, in the tours and these rooms, right, in vans and rooms and so forth. We won't be conducting a meeting, but it is a, a quorum, so thank you though. So, so I'm sure our parliamentarian will have a lot to say with the fact that we have deviated a little bit from stated agenda, sorry about that, but it was all part of general manager comments, we're going to open it up now, 5.03. Any attendee comments? I see one online, but are there any in the room? So nothing in the room? Do you want me to read that or?
Yeah, boy.
Thank you. I'll read the YouTube question, which is from Mary Ganet, 133113. All meetings should be taped and available to the membership, the GM Ops meeting should not be an exception. Thanks for the comment, we're taking it under advisement, Mary, in terms of being able to have these, the, it's not the intention to keep anything secret, we hold it in a smaller room because it's always been a less formal meeting. I know you're aware of the, you may be personally aware of the intention, nonetheless, understand the spirit. The, Kyle, who's our head of IT and Stephen are looking at what the options may be for the future in terms of how to make, make it possible to either record or broadcast some of those meetings, but thanks for the comment. Any other comments, questions? Okay, couple of quick reminders. We have regularly scheduled, moving on to 6.01, moving on to 6.01, our next G Governing Board Workshop is December the 12th here in the lecture hall at 9:00 AM. However, our next regular meeting, the second meeting of the month, will be on the 18th at 10:00 AM. We've moved that time forward or later one hour because that's an employee appreciation breakfast morning and it gives our staff and governing board adequate time to be with our staff and get here. So we just postponed that, probably didn't need the full hour, we just wanted to make it a little bit safe. So please make note and we'll do lots of promotion to this as well. December 12th, regular time and place, 9:00 AM here in the lecture hall. December 18th will be our regular meeting and that will be at 10:00 AM. Thank you, by the way, directors, for being flexible with the start time on the 18th. With that, it is 9:58 and this meeting is adjourned.